Coach Q. Yes, you can have a lot of their pudding.
All right, thank you.
Or you have the next to your pudding.
All right.
Wherever you're going.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Wilda and now I go by Coach Q here at the school. I am the physical education and health teacher. I come to Ogo with about sixteen years of experience, seventeen years teaching experience. What I want to tell you tonight is my concern for the conditions of the school. I spoke earlier about it. We have a beautiful facility here, but when I go elsewhere, I see a lot of sad things. I am... It hurts me to come into school every day and see the conditions that our students have to learn in. And so I've been working with Dr. Soltero. We have a volunteer group coming in on the third of December from eight to eleven to help with a beautification project. But I'd like to invite you to come and see some of the conditions in the athletic and gymnasium facility. They're pretty stark. And I think that when you see them, you may be shocked. Every morning I come in about two hours early, and I don't come in to plan, I come in to clean. I come in to try to make sure that there are no mice in the building.
Good luck with that.
That there are no snakes.
Good luck with that.
That... That... That everything is secure and safe for our children because if our children don't have a clean, safe place to learn, that's the bottom of the pyramid of Maslow's hierarchy, and you can pick that up in psychological terms. If we don't have that, then we're not going to be able to raise our test scores. And so that's where I'm starting from. That's my goal, is to help raise the conditions for our students here in the school. And I invite you to come and tour some of the facilities with me. I'd like to work with you all and do some more work on seeing what we can do to help some improvements in this area.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Been saying about the same thing for ten years. We've been allowed to come to the line of this one opposite. Okay.
December we do have our meetings are consecutive.
Okay, come on.
Thank you. Um, some of the schedule I can't remember.
Yes, it's just scheduling conflict on my part. So I asked, um, can we first met a week or so ago? We can have just, just for December, between fifth and the sixth, just Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
So when we come down to voting on this, we're voting, we can either vote on the entire package as if it was just presented, that the narrative evaluation, then using the CBI tool for the November evaluation, or you can break it and vote on different parts separately. It seemed like with the new evaluation tool that Asba has sent out, it's exhaustive and comprehensive. And they, they've recommended their trend in it, because we live in a trend. So I figured we're all familiar with the same tool that we've been using. So it would be easiest to use that. If it works for all those evaluation tools, still on the personal policy, we might ask it.
Can you always during the year evaluate the other one and decide the following cycle?
Yes.
Change when you don't think to, for any cycle. Uh, Lonnie, can I ask you a question? Were you asking about the board meeting independently of the superintendent? Or were you just, or you were asking specifically that it was a executive session? Were you having conversations about that too, about the board meeting separately?
So what I wanted to know was, when we did this evaluation, was it a board only evaluation that we presented to the superintendent with what we, we had concluded? Or was the superintendent involved in the evaluation process? You know, and last time we evaluated superintendent, that got a little contentious. So I wanted to make sure that we all, we all, well, we're all in a love affair right now. I want to make sure that we, we decide these, what we're gonna do, right? So everybody knows what's gonna happen and what's gonna, what's gonna go.
So do you think, um, so I, I know everyone hasn't had a chance to read through the first year evaluation instrument really thoroughly. But, um, do you think that probably Wednesday will be worthwhile to come up with more of a, um, specific procedure for discussion purposes? Or we can do it, we can do it now? Because there isn't anything, I'll say, there isn't anything in here about whether the board meets independently first and then meets with the superintendent. That's not, that's not addressed here at all.
So this deal that we're doing is just a one-time-only deal, right? For the first year evaluation? Yeah, so I think it's my idea.
And you? Yeah, I, I, like I said, I think when we do the more, the longer one, the more comprehensive one, at times there can be value to have the board meet about it on their own first. To kind of get consensus on what it is we're gonna be presenting to the superintendent. I tend to think for this one in December, if you need that.
So how, what all do you think about doing that? About actually meeting independently, but let's say agree that it's gonna be super brief? And I actually have a question. It's a good thing. I actually have a question that I would like to ask you all without bringing everyone together. What do you think about that? About turning out under each, like 10 minutes?
For December or for?
For this one, for this one. Like say, you know, 10 minute, just us to, to discuss and then, and then out. Does anyone oppose to that?
I think it's all one shot. That's just people.
So you don't want to?
No.
Any board of board members meeting to discuss anything happening on any agenda has to be posted. It has to be done 24 hours.
Absolutely.
Any meeting of a core of board members to discuss anything for any kind of school business has to be posted and has to be posted before 24 hours.
Right, so.
So even if you guys met at the coffee shop, then we need to post it.
No, 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 that's not.
It's like going to do a 10-minute executive session. Or the executive session, break it up like 10 minutes here and then go to the.
Oh, at the same meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, hang on a minute, I'm gonna be quick.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so it doesn't seem like we have an agreement. So maybe if on plan, say, if I feel like it's important, we all propose it as a nine-minute.
Any other questions about that? Is that your issue?
Proposition 301.
Yep. Next one is the business approval of proposition 301 time for the 2022.
Yes, Mr. President and members of the board. Um, I'm gonna be brief, I'll just give a quick intro, but I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Shabols. This is just regarding the 301 plan. Really, in a sense, this started October 5th, where we shared with the staff during the professional development, uh, talking about 301, Dr. Shabols, Ms. Smith, and I. But this has been a collaborative process throughout. Uh, really had a highlight, uh, November 2nd to the 8th. Were the principal, Dr. Shabols, and his leadership committee just meeting in collaboration with Ms. Smith and myself. And also, uh, we involved, uh, our legal department, this was a question, making sure that we were following, um, auditor general guidelines and reports as it came to base pay, performance pay, retention pay. Uh, making sure that we maintain the focus on teacher compensation and academic achievement, teacher compensation for certified teachers. And what I really, Ms. Smith was, was, was exceptional and reminded us about it's teacher compensation for certified. They have to be certified, um, and academic achievements. So that being said, um, I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Shabols, so he can also, uh, give his, uh, his, uh, his report on how this went and the plan itself.
Thank you. A little one like last year, um, where there were just a few, a few changes made and, and, um, we've met once or twice and it kind of went straight through and the goals were the same. Uh, the committee this year had some requests that they, they had some goals that they wanted changed and they also wanted the eligibility, um, to be changed as well. Who was eligible for the 301, following, of course, Arizona State law. And so those are some of the changes that you would see on here compared to last year. I'll start with the 301 eligibility. Of course, it has to be a certified teacher. But that's kind of last year, it basically ended with that, being a certified teacher. But we noticed from other school districts and some, a few of our new teachers came from other school districts here in Arizona or California, we have a couple, um, that it wasn't just certified teachers, but that other districts had librarians, instructional coaches, interventionists, support service providers, all people who are certified, but they're also, they were also involved in the 301, considering they're also involved in our student academic achievement, um, as well as, as well as a class, a person that's in the classroom 100% of the time. So we were able to go through, as I said, and look at some different, um, school districts. We, we talked with Dr. Soltero, business, our business department, and with the, um, legal department to, to make sure that this was something that everybody that we had found doing it was, was all, um, legal and, and okay for us to be able to do. And, uh, we were very, the teachers were very pleased, um, that this came together. So we, we have a group of teachers that represent on the, on the leadership committee, school leadership committee, so it's not called the 301 committee, there's other things that they do, um, within that committee. But they, they thought it was important that there were some people on our campus, not getting 301, but that were working extremely hard for them to help the teachers get the goals and then themselves were accomplishing their own goals, but not reaping the rewards of the 301. So, um, so that was really important to them and it was, it's very teacher-driven. We had a couple of full, full staff meetings where 301 was discussed, which really didn't happen last year, but the difference this year is over half the teachers are new. So many of them have no clue what 301, what it even is and the history of it. Um, some just, of course, just want to know what, what are my goals? What do I have to do? And like I said, there's 11 and never, never heard of it at all. So, um, so that was interesting and it's just a little, little more fun to do than, than last year. Whenever they kind of do, it's like, no, here's what we want. We don't need to change it, just change dates and, okay, if that worked for everyone, we were able to do it. So, so this did make it more interesting and, and more collaborative. A couple of other things, uh, that are changed from last year, I'm sure that's what you kind of want to know is what, what's different than last year. So for the goals, last year we had parent-teacher conferences on there. The teachers, um, unanimously didn't, didn't want that because they, they want things, uh, they want goals that they can have control of. And, um, as much as we beg, plead, and, and communicate with parents, sometimes it's just really hard to get here, get in for those conferences. That's understandable. Teachers didn't feel they had control over that as much as they would have control over, um, extending the parent, positive parent contacts and making that a bigger chunk of, or half of, half of their 301 goals. And as you can read through there, there's, um, they're pretty much the same regulations as, as previous years. Everything has to be administratively approved. Documentation has to be, um, outstanding, uh, over and above and over what, uh, I would usually think that should be brought to me. Our teachers are just great at bringing you all the documentation from signature notes, the pictures of the computer screens, to, to printouts of their Zoom meeting or Zoom conference meetings that they may have with, with the parents. And, um, and a lot of times these, these turn into a form of a conference. Um, because once you get in, they'll start building that relationship with those positive parent contacts, they're gonna start asking you a few more questions about their, their child as a student. Not just, okay, now I've heard the good stuff, but now tell me really what's going on with this? Or how to push them off this grid? And that can continue with the year-long dialogue, but with the conferences, it's just kind of a one evening. So I, so I, I agree with them, I thought that was very positive. And next, uh, the same as last year, 50% would be a smart goal. And, um, same smart goal, specific, measurable, achievable, rigorous, relevant, and time-bound. And that's something again that they know they have control over. We have, there's, there's a, there's a pre-assessment. It's the work that I do in between and the documented work and then the post-assessment, whether it's something national, state, or something that's, that's developed here, um, here on campus. But especially what, what I was hearing from the teachers is using our beyond textbooks and that, and that context. And contacts with beyond textbooks and many of the assessments that they've used following that original calendar and the standard calendar. So, so they have, so they have, um, something to lean against that they know is proven and vetted is, is very positive. And, uh, and so that, that was a big thing that we looked at and 50% would go there. And then it just kind of explains that if you, if, you know, if you don't reach all these categories, what, what the payout would be, what the awards would be, um, for 100% and 60%, 80%. Or, or you can choose not to do that. We had some teachers choose not to last year. So it's not something you have to do. If you choose not to, that's, that, that's fine. We had teachers, uh, chose not to do it last year, but 99% of the things they still did. And I knew they did it, but that was, but that was their choice. Um, we work with the teachers, administration, I work with the teachers. Uh, what we do, just as a side note, you know, we do a pre-observation meeting with teachers and a lot of times that's where I see them come up with the ideas for their smart goal as well. While we're here, we're talking about the evaluation coming up, but like while we're here, here's what I'm thinking of for my smart goal. And we look at that and make sure that, you know, it is, it isn't a huge overreach. And I have, uh, statistical data that shows, um, the best, the best percentages to have on smart goals and how, how to help yourself be attainable, but how to, how to make the children successful too, with, uh, the academic, academic success of that smart goal. So, uh, yeah, it took a little longer because we changed some of the, some of the wording and like I said, some of the goals and the people that are eligible to do it. And we went through a lot of different steps with business and the legal department. But, um, everybody seems to be pleased and ready to get up and running with it. We are about a month or two behind on this and apologize for that, but we did. Once they started changing the wording, we want to make sure that it was all good to go before it was brought to you. And, and we've been talking about that with, with the teachers, uh, because there's been a lot of questions about when, when we're sufficiently started and, you know, there's always looking to get paid, those questions. Maybe that was the first question and then the others followed that, but understandable.
I'm curious, the 301 is every year, right?
Yes.
Are you sure? I mean, can they both not have 301?
We get the funds, the committee submits a plan with the board first.
But suppose the, like, the state doesn't.
Doesn't fund it. Well, it was wanting to expire about two years ago. And they took it to voters and it's now extended.
For how long?
I don't.
Then what happens to the teacher's salary when they are, do not have? I've always worked with salary scale and they know and whatnot. And I think this is fine for a little bit extra. But every year they, if you ask a beginning teacher how much it is, you, it, there's no, we don't, we have trouble hiring the teachers because we see this as the salary and it's not permanent.
I, I think it's a good point, but I wondered if that is, I've heard in that, so it's definitely salary scale. I just want to make sure we're following, uh. But this is good, this is good conversation. Um, I wanted to bring in, uh, Ms. Smith. Any other details you wanted to share as far as to make sure we're following auditor general guidelines? So we don't get an inquiry or finding?
No, we, Lance and I discussed this before it moved up the ladder and they do have to be certified for the case.
And you have to work, as you had to the past, or if they become sort of, are they to the.
That's addressing, that's a portion of it.
Yes.
It's a portion of your plan.
I think it shows, I'm not sure.
But they really expanded the performance pay, which I agree with. And the plan is, that's the plan they have and that's what the board approved. Some people take it all the way down the parapods.
Mm-hmm.
That's a, a local decision. And so what they have come up with here is, appeared to spell out any, any questions that we would get addressed by the teachers clearly, but you know what, what you needed to do for it. And who were eligible, which was a, a discussion people. And so, um, the only thing that I questioned Lance about to make sure they understand is the income of the payout. And it says there's three categories. And then down below, if you get 100%, the 100% means 100% of all three of these. Not, no, no means along the way. So you can laugh yourself out. You're not gonna get 80% or at least two, it's gonna be, it like, if you get two just the positive parent contacts, that equals 50%. You would get 80% of the.
And all of our 301 eligibility, um, folks listed, listed on there, like librarians, instructors. All of ours, all of ours actually do teach at least one period a day. Where I know it's, uh, some of the other districts, um, they have councils.
Yes.
That don't teach a class, but because they are certified, they, they're still eligible. But, but all of ours do teach, do teach at least one period, which is a pretty important thing.
Mr. Hopkins, it's, it's right here in the, on the bottom of the first page or the bottom of the second paragraph.
Also, I wanted to share also, uh, Mr. Hopkins and members of the board, 94% of the teachers voted to approve the plan. And it was very, uh, very favorable vote. And so, uh, I, I will be recommending the approval of the 301 plan. But it was good, 94%, that was, that was good, good feedback after we made sure we had a thorough process and follow the guidance.
Question, so the, is the certification requirement is going to be Arizona certified, correct? And so I know there's a number of our staff that are not.
Not yet, but they will.
And all, all have applied. So all of the teachers, um, that are, well, I'll accept one teacher who are brand new this year, all applied for their certification. Mr. P got hits today.
Yeah.
So, um.
They're, they're on their way.
They're on their way. Everybody's applied, so we're just waiting for them to come back from ADE or say you need A, B, or C, or whatever. But all the applicants are out there, so we're just waiting for ADE to do this thing.
And whoever certified at the time.
Of each quarter.
Yeah, each quarter. It gets to be up among the, the currently certified.
Right.
You're right.
Thank you.
Any more questions in the session? Now we're on to the report, the 2022 letter grades.
Mr. President, members of the board, um, we do have some information here that we asked our, our, uh, our law school's leadership team, Dr. Shabols and, and Mr. Casey to share some information. So, uh, Mr. Casey, our data analyst, in this recording, we present to the board the 2022 letter grades and corresponding information. Mr. Casey?
Good evening, honorable first-hand board members, Dr. Soltero and Dr. Shabols and committee members. On November 1st, the state board of education released school grades for all the schools in Arizona. And our elementary school has a C and high school is graded, um, has received a D grade. Compared to the past, the D is a shock, but then I saw the results in May and over the summer, I knew that our grade is going to be lower, on the lower side. But I was not sure where it is what it was going to be exactly, but we have the results now. For the elementary, they have two different grading system. Uh, how they calculate the grade is different for K age and high school. And they have a totally different system for, uh, alternative schools, which are online or drop-out recovery. For the K age, 50%, the main, biggest component is from growth. And proficiency is what, 30%. English learners, um, their improvement and proficiency is what, 10%. And acceleration and readiness, there are different components that go into that area that is what 10 points. So out of 100 points, it is calculated and we got a score of 64.88 and that's how we receive C. In proficiency, out of 30, you receive 7.68. For growth, 38.2 out of 50. And for your proficiency out of 10, you receive seven points. You got a 10 out of 10 possible points for acceleration and readiness. So in addition to the 62.88, you receive two bonus points for special education inclusion. This year, the state board decided to continue to use, uh, the prior year cut scores for grades, ATF grades. This decision was done like in mid-October. So they decided to keep the same cut scores as before. And as you can see, 64.88 is like, there's a little bit of margin above the bottom line. But it is below the midpoint of that category C. And for high school, the D is from 32 to 48. And our score was 46.19. We'll go over that later. This is the details on like all the proficiency scores by grade level. Um, how many points in English language arts and how many mathematics? So, as you can see, students who test partially proficient will receive 0.6 points. Students who are proficient, number P is proficient, will receive one point. And highly proficient students will bring in 1.3 points per subject area. And they add all the points and total number of students who are tested. And there are more complex calculations that go into place, uh, like if the student was here for the full academic year. And there is also another calculation that is done based on how many years the student has been here with the district. There are multiple calculations and based on all that, they decide what is the highest possible value. Another thing that goes into this calculation is students will take alternate assessments, special education students who qualify for alternate assessment. They will also, if they are proficient or highly proficient or even partially proficient, school will receive, will receive points for those students. Another calculation for the growth component of it, which is the most, the biggest part of it, 50%. So there are two parts of it, the student growth points, the student growth percentile. This is where students, students who are receiving the same score last year, how they did this year is compared all across the state at the same grade level. So everyone in 5th grade, English language arts, who received, say, 2,502 as their scale score last year, they're ranked from 1 to 100 and if they belong in the first 33, lower 33 percentile, their growth is considered as low growth. And if they are between 33rd percentile to 66th percentile, in the middle third, then they are considered average growth. And if they did better than two-thirds of the group, that is considered high growth. And this is like a comparison of how our students did with a, come in comparison with other school districts. As you can see, um, we have very few numbers in the highly proficient on the far right because we had very few students who became proficient last year. And even this year, we only have a few students who became highly proficient. So the same, as you can see, proficient, we do have students who are in the highly, high-growth area, yeah? But one thing I would like you to notice, the left side, previous year minimally proficient, the third column, current year high growth. So students last year, they were minimally proficient. And this year, a significant number of those students performed at high growth, even though their overall performance is not on grade level, but they are making, they made progress compared to other schools. And from the previous screen, this is how points are calculated. If they are in the low growth category, no matter how they performed last year, you will not receive any points. And if they are in the average growth, if they demonstrate an average growth, you receive one point per student in all categories. And if you look far right, you can see, if a minimally proficient student, um, achieves high growth compared to his academic peers, then you receive two points for one student. And a partially proficient student demonstrates high growth will receive 1.8 points. And proficient students achieving high growth will bring us 1.2 points. And a highly proficient student with a high growth will only bring us one point. So this is the same calculation for student growth percentile for math. And 6th grade math is one outstanding, minimally proficient students. High growth number was 51.85. And even previous year, partially proficient, um, I'm looking at this area, this column here and here. So any of those high growth, 70% of the students at that grade level showed high growth. So any of those high growth, seventy percent of the students at that grade level showed high growth. These are some of the other points here, year proficiency, English learners, um, if their proficiency level, number of percentage of students who tested proficient last year, if it matched the state average, you would receive five points, but really three. And for year growth points, based on how they, um, move from one proficiency level, whether it is premium or the level ten to basic or intermediate and from intermediate to proficient. Based on that, you receive points, and you receive the total of four out of five, and if those two, you receive seven out of ten. For acceleration and readiness, eighth grade math highly proficient and, uh, increasing the highly proficient grade and decreasing the minimally proficient grade. And third grade, English language arts minimally proficient, um, correction, chronic absenteeism, and subgroup improvement. So that is by ethnicity, social, um, socioeconomic status, and if they belong to homeless or any special category. There are thirteen categories that are eligible for, and from all groups, each group can earn two points. But from the total subgroup improvement, we can only receive at the most six points. And as you can see here, we received fifteen points for the acceleration and readiness, but that category has a cutoff of ten points, so we receive all ten out of ten. Um, this is like a, the year proficiency, how it is calculated. Five points if it is greater than or equal to the state average, and standard deviation, they calculate the standard deviation, and so it looks like we are within point five to one standard deviation below the statewide mean. And this is again for year growth points, this is how it is calculated. And this is also a comparative measure, which means like they calculate the growth points and compare it with others, um, other districts, other schools, and that's how the points are. This is another area where we receive two bonus points, you know, for the special education. The state has fourteen point two four percent, uh, special education participation. And our district has twelve percent. So if you meet eighty percent of the state average, eleven point four or above, we receive two bonus points. And for students in grade five and eight, they take the science tests, and if they are within a certain standard deviation of the twenty six point seven, we receive zero, one point five or three bonus points. You didn't receive any, you are not close enough to the state average. So this is how the, uh, special education bonus points are calculated, so it is not zero or two, it is zero, one, 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 five or two. And we receive all two. And here we receive our three possible ones we didn't receive for the science proficiency. Now for high school, the calculation is different, your proficiency is what thirty percent, growth is twenty percent. College and career readiness indicators are about twenty percent. Graduation rate and graduation rate improvement together, twenty percent. And English learners proficiency and growth is what ten points. Out of thirty, you are six point seven six for proficiency, and for growth, eight point five three out of twenty. And English learners proficiency and growth combined, five points. Graduation rate, we receive ten out of ten points. For graduation rate improvement, we receive zero out of ten. College and career readiness indicators, seventh quarter score eleven point four. So that adds up to forty one point six nine, then bonus points, um, special education bonus points two, and college and career readiness indicator bonus point one, and ACT aspire tested rate, one point five bonus points, so we receive total of four point five bonus points. That added up to forty six point one nine, and the grade is C.
So, could you go back to another slide for a second? So how are we getting the proficiency number from testing?
That is, yes, from ACT testing, students in grade eleven took the ACT test, and from that, how many students met the college readiness benchmark in English, math, uh, science, all those areas.
And that just eleven graders?
Only the eleven graders.
Okay, and then growth is for?
The same students, how?
Eleventh graders or all?
Eleven graders.
How is it just the eleventh graders?
Um, there is graduation rate, that is the seniors. And the graduation rate improvement is still the seniors. College and career readiness score is for only for the senior class.
And how do they come up with that?
Based on a lot of category, a lot of things, including proficiency, um, their credits, their GPA. If they are eligible for college enrollment, if they have met all the criteria, including, um, passing all the classes, with two foreign language credits, and all those requirements for Arizona Regents, for which it's, um, college readiness. So that is one point. Then taking, uh, dual enrollment classes, college credit classes while you are in high school. Uh, taking ACT course and passing the course with the A, B, or C. And taking the CTE assessment and passing the CTE, um, exam and pass proficient on that assessment. So each one has a different point, so we have to calculate, uh, track the points and calculate the points and report it to the state at the end of the year. Even students completing FSA will bring us points. Students taking ASW or ACT or SAT and meeting the college readiness benchmark, that gives us points. So there are a lot of things that goes into the college readiness, CCI benchmark.
And you're the one that has to gather all that information?
There are other people, like a CTE person will give it to me, and I have to combine it, put it together, and submit it to the state.
Do you think we have you?
Okay, now, for the proficiency for the high school, this is where the ACT, eleven graders, um, took the ACT assessment, and for English language arts, we have thirty six point nine six from ACT either way, and then ACT math, fifteen point five six. And the other one is the markish state alternate assessment, so this is the special education students who qualify for alternate assessment. Um, the, all that is combined together, and the proficiency points are calculated, so the total is six point seven six. The growth component, they took the, the same student's score from eighth grade when they were in middle school. And that score is compared to their ACT score in eleventh grade, two different tests. But they were able to establish a reliable mathematical model that will give reasonable points for, uh, growth. And it was a model that will reward the growth and that is going to be taken into consideration, like students who are performing at the lower level has the opportunity to grow, and students who are high, uh, on the higher level also has the opportunity to grow. And if they don't, it is going to reflect them on this point. So in English language arts, we receive three point five points, and math, we receive five points.
Okay, I'm sorry, could you go back to that slide again, just, I just want to make sure I know what I'm seeing. So, so we're testing, we're, we're comparing where they're at test scores wise in the eighth grade to where they're at in the eleventh grade?
Yes, so eighth grade, all students will receive the same score, like how they belong to ACT eleventh grade, they compare their scores.
So when it says prior year proficient, um, I see eleven point seven six, that, that, I'm not getting, I'm not understanding, I guess I'm not passing this test, huh? But, um, so if they're going back to the eighth grade, I don't see where, what that means.
So in the eighth grade year test, if they were proficient, we had eleven point seven six percent of our students were proficient.
Okay.
But they had low growth this year. So on the ACT, um, eleven point seven six percent of students who became proficient in eighth grade, they were rated as low growth. And the minimally proficient students, a lot of our minimally proficient students from eighth grade, they had very low growth.
So they were minimum in eighth grade and minimum in the eleventh grade?
Yes.
They didn't grow at all?
Part of it is also the, uh, test, based on how familiar the students are with the test instrument. Um, eighth grade, they had unlimited time, but when it comes to ACT, it is a timed test, and they have to finish the test within limited time. And then the type of questions are different, so they have two different tests altogether. But still, everyone is, everyone in eighth grade took the same test, and everyone in eleventh grade, they are taking the same. Even though it's a different test, all the students are taking those two tests, so they found a way to compare those.
So the maximum points that we could have gotten was twenty, twenty?
Twenty, uh, we received eight point five three. Five plus eight point five three, the bottom.
Three point five three?
Yes.
Out of twenty?
No, totally eight point five three.
Okay.
Three and five, three point five three plus five.
So we weren't quite half?
Yeah, we're not half. For English learners, total ten points possible, we receive five, two from proficiency, three from growth points. Graduation rate, they take four years, uh, this is based on twenty twenty one, spring twenty twenty one year, we had eighty eight point eight nine percent graduation rate. And that is what five points, so it's a four point four four. And all those calculated and added up to a total of ten. Should be more than, slightly more than that, but it is, um, cut off at that. So since we already have know how the state is going to calculate it for next year, I get the math. Um, we have this year, or the last spring, we had eighty one point eight two percent graduation rate. And next year, we will receive the total of ten possible points out of ten. But in another category, which is the growth, we didn't meet a ninety percent or above, and we did not show improvement from the prior year, so we received zero points last year. I mean, in the current year. And next year again, we are not, we are going to receive the zero points for this because everything is calculated based on the twenty twenty two graduation rate. And this is a criteria that I talked about, the different things that they look at. So we are not within two points of last year's graduation rate. Um, this is the twenty percent of college and career readiness indicators, uh, that I talked about. Points can be earned for all these items listed there. And here there is a cutoff for, a student can at the most earn two points for the score. So even if a student takes, does all this, like, an outstanding student, will qualify the one point, one point for the we don't have the ID program, but the CTE one point two five, and the same student may qualify on ACT, um, eight. And definitely that student will complete the FSA. And all those different categories, even if the same student earns more, four or five or six points, the maximum the student can contribute to school is two points per student. And those students who don't get the two points, um, will hurt us in our calculation. And another thing is like only if the student gets a one full point, then only, um, that is contributed towards the school points. So even if a student gets like a, um, nine tenths of a point, still that won't mean anything. The same way, one and a half points, only one point will be counted towards the school's calculation for, for that student. Again, for high school, um, we receive the two bonus points for special education, and ACT aspire bonus point. This is just for participation for last year, we receive one point five out of three possible points. And this is a criteria, and we didn't meet the ninety five percent testing rate, but we did meet the ninety percent, so we received one point five. So that was all last year's, and going forward, this is how, this is the information we have for next year. How they are going to calculate the points. This similar in many areas, but there are some slight differences. So some of the calculations are going to be substituted, especially the nine through twelve model is going to change slightly. So based on all that, in twenty twenty two, we receive sixty four point eight eight, and this is our each line, how it was. And this is like something that I would recommend as, or said as involved, and I shared with our teachers. And how I came up with this, this is like based on our prior twenty nineteen proficiency scores within that area, about twelve. And if we make that much improvement in proficiency, definitely our growth point is going to be at least forty. And acceleration and readiness points, this year we receive fifteen points, so definitely we can earn ten out of ten next year too. English learners, this year we get seven, next year, we have a lot of students who are very close to proficiency, and if we focus on that and provide individualized attention, we can definitely get all possible points in that category. And for special education bonus points, I believe that we are going to maintain the two points we received. And I would like to see at least some points earned in the science by focusing working with the fifth grade and eighth grade students on the science. And if you do that, we can get a seventy five point five, um, which will be at the base on this year's points. And for high school, our total was forty six point one nine. Proficiency was six point seven six. Looking at twenty nineteen proficiency, before the pandemic proficiency rate, it was thirteen. You receive thirteen points, or close to thirteen points that time. So if you can meet that, and if you double the proficiency, then definitely the growth is also going to be doubled. And we need to show improvement in the college and career readiness parameters. One of the things I had to do is like instead of tracking the points at the end of the year. One of the things I had to do is like instead of tracking the points at the end of the year, we will start tracking it now. That way we can see if there's a student who can take some tests or, um, if the student is doing college courses or those students who are not earning enough points, making sure that they accomplish PAFSA or a new place where we can get those points. That way we can improve this score. English learners, again, high school, there are many, we looked at the students' scores from, as a last course from last year. We saw a significant number of students who were proficient in many areas, but are very close to proficiency in remaining areas. So we are looking at getting all those students moving to proficiency this year. And if that happens, definitely we will get ten out of ten for the year. Graduation rate, this is already earned. And this zero is something that we cannot change for this year, I mean, the coming year. Um, but going forward, we will change this. Special education bonus, I anticipate is to stay. And we're looking at adding this one point five. And ACT has five bonus points, may not be available for next year. So if you do this, we get a sixty six point five. Uh, this year's points were changed drastically, the state came up with the cut scores. Uh, so I have no idea that the sixty six point five will be whether it is a C or whether it will qualify for a B, but definitely it will be a C. So that's all the requirements I have, yes?
I have one question of the cut score. Um, so like before our last letter grade for high school was a B, I believe. And wasn't it quite high? Like I, I think I remember we had a high P in terms of points. Uh, for last time we were given a letter grade, is that correct?
Um, twenty eighteen, we had seventy four point seven six as our positive points. And that was, uh, that was our highest points I can see from twenty seventeen. Uh, we had an A in twenty fourteen, but I don't have the exact points, but that was like a uh, way higher, like in the eighties, I believe. But that was a different test and different calculation. But in twenty eighteen, I have the numbers, um, that's seventy four point seven six. Um, but after that, the year after twenty nineteen, they calculated the points and we were at fifty six point five three. And twenty twenty one, they calculated the points fifty nine point eight. But they didn't change the grade, we were allowed to keep the same grade. But our points were in the fifties, mid fifties and like the high fifty last year.
How much of this is even shared with the community?
Um, we have shared with, within this canvas, I have shared all these points.
Yeah, but I'm talking about parents and the community and the newspaper and stuff.
It's being shared right there.
Uh, not the PowerPoint, but we did post a letter on our, on the website, on Facebook page. Um, where else have we stood? Somewhere, uh, so we, we've sent, oh, I emailed it out to, not this PowerPoint, but a letter, a parent letter. That Casey, can you go to our website, our, our schools?
You know, while you're doing that, I saw a commercial Tom Horn did. And he was talking about the current head of education and, and how the grades had, had gone down.
Just called them?
But the years that he used were all the pandemic years, right? And then he made himself look good by using the non-pandemic years. Well, I'm sure a lot of this is because of, of the pandemic, we're just climbing back out of that.
Well, I remember the last time Mr. Casey was here, the scores, whenever they change what the assessment tool is, the score is dropped. And then when they basically change out one test for the next test, they drop and then they build it up and then they change what the assessment tool is again.
Part of it is our teachers being familiar with it and then the students, um, being familiar with the test instrument. Um, students getting enough practice. And especially when it is at time, that's how students need a lot of practice on lab, uh, on taking in time. So definitely like being familiar with the testing environment helps them do better on the test.
So going back to, this is our, our homepage, so our schools at our homepage, scroll down. This is a letter from, uh, Dr. Chabot and Dr. Sotero that went out to, um, every parent and guardian. And then it's posted on our website also. And the link on the Facebook page went straight to the website.
I just don't think that a C score or a D score is acceptable. And if you read that letter, it sounds a lot better than what really was going on. And I wondered how much you were going to let them know that we weren't doing well and what we're planning to do to increase it.
That's, uh, Mr. Hutton, Ms. Duncan, that's a great question. I mean, what we're doing, what I can share with you, what we have done, once we found out our score is right away, this is guiding our professional development. So that's a big plus, um, staying with, with the focus of the letter grade. Our last leadership team meeting, our homeschool leadership team, Dr. Chabot, Mr. Casey, this, Aragón and I, we, we, we looked at the data, what he just had, we, we went through it. And that guided our next professional development. Uh, if you go, can you go back, Mr. Casey, to the, to the nine twelve? Uh, what we have to do to increase our score? I think it was the very last slide, one of the last two slides that showed up, right here. This, I really believe was great to share with the entire staff. Um, Mr. Casey, Dr. Chabot targeted our, our secondary school teachers. If you can go to the next one, Mr. Casey, right there. If you go, if you go to EL, grades nine to twelve, ten, twenty twenty three out of five, this next year we want to go for ten. If everything else stays the same there, and if simply go up three to eight, we're at a C. They made sure to share that with our secondary teachers, all content areas. And the pre-K six, can we go back to Mr. Casey? The pre-K six, uh, when this happened, when I met with them, this was guiding our planning also, I just wanted to share that with you. So, so what we're doing first is confronting the brutal facts first and the staff. So that we're all well versed in all the different details. But we really, we're really also, all goals are critical. But another example, there you see the EL at seven in twenty twenty two. In twenty twenty three, if we go up three points, we're actually closer to a seventy two, which is a B. So just really having targeted strategic, strategic data-driven decision-making. That was guarding, guiding our discussion, Ms. Duncan, with our pre-K sixteen. What, the next professional development actually we met November eighth, it was November ninth. And we had all the pre-K six teachers target using the data that he's shared, the assessment data, the recording assessment, the DIBOS and the Arizona English Language Director Assessment Data, targeting ten students, identifying ten students. Any class, K to six, that can go from minimally proficient, like he showed, to partially proficient. That's our strength, that K is the growth, I think it was thirty eight out of fifty points, right, Mr. Casey? So if we can go from them being at P grade, we get points for that. So just dissecting that even more.
I understand that, and, and, you know, I think it's possible to happen. But I want to know how much of this is being shared with the actual community.
Well, you know, what we can do is, when we, me as a leadership team, we can, we can talk about that. How can we share this more?
Yeah, because that letter looked, it's
Sure.
There were places on there that I felt we were not being really transparent with.
Okay, no, that's fine. What we wanted to do though, as far as everyone saw the letter grade, we wanted to also still focus on what went well. It's very, it's very, it's very, uh, it's easy for us to point out, we already saw very direct a C and a D. But we wanted to point out where we are doing well, so that we do have some positives to build on. But there's always room for growth in student group, absolutely. And we can figure out more and more as a leadership team collaboratively, how can we share this more with our community?
I think we have to be very open with what we haven't done well and what we've hoped to do.
Sure.
But I did find that that letter was that kind of information.
Well, that was good feedback. I was told, and this is just what Marshall was saying, that, you know, we had gone a while about a pharmacist here in Ohio, drastically affected the community, drastically affected it. And they hired a pharmacist and she came in and she had two aged children. She came in, everything progressed. And then she did research on the school and she backed down the contract because she said the school wasn't doing well.
If we have to, just for a point of, 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 of unity, if we need to, I'll let this be focused on.
Well, I'm kind of, the point I'm trying to make is this, this is significant.
Sure.
This is the very, these are very significant numbers. You know, the last two times Mr. Casey's come in and presented those numbers, they were dismal, both, both fives, right? And, and so, and I, and I understand the pandemic part of it, but, but this is really affecting not only the kids, but the community. And, and I know you're working on this and I know you're brand new. And I know you have a lot of time, uh, you're going to spend a lot of time working on this. But I'm just saying that, that these, these things, like Marshall was saying, people make decisions on whether they're going to live in our community off of these, these sort of numbers. Well, the belief of Mr. Hopkins, Mr. Guthrie, the first who were doing, and this goes, this goes back twenty, thirty, forty years of the research. Jim Collins talked about this to a good degree. We're confronting the brutal facts. Everyone needs to see what the data is. It, it, it depersonalizes the decision-making. Um, we have a lot of new teachers like Dr. Chabot mentioned. But I really got to be honest, just talking from, from right now, the present now, living in the moment, moving forward, the enthusiasm from our teachers when we go through this, just to know this is where we are, this is where we got to go. And so, yes, it is challenging. But, but Ms. Duncan, that you make there, absolutely. We got to figure out how to do this more. Um, Dr. Chabot and I can figure out, I'm talking with one of our parenting groups, how to get this information out more to our parents who are helping us.
So they can understand?
Absolutely, I, I agree. But the very first step that we have to do is as a staff, confront the brutal facts of this is where we are. We have an action plan moving forward. I was really excited to see our, our pre-K six teachers last week. Every teacher and specialist, uh, PE specialist, art specialist, special ed resource teacher, special ed director, and our EL resource teacher, they also made a list of ten students that they want to promote some. So everyone is talking the same language now of, of this is the data, how do we confront it? How do we be more strategic? How was our PD, could they use this to guide the, the decision-making and the instruction in the classroom? But absolutely, there's always going to be room on how can we get this information more with our parents and community and, and go working on that. So that, that absolutely, we need.
That's all I mean, I know that one of our goals was for you to be more transparent.
Absolutely, ma'am.
And, uh, I just was curious how, I mean, I didn't think that letter did it. And then how much of something like this can they understand in the first place?
Well, what we wanted to do in the letter was have it come from both of us, so the community can see there's a unified approach. So they can see that he and I are on the same page, we're confronting this together, uh, we're not pointing fingers. It's, 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 it's on us, what can we do better as administrators? But first and foremost, the community needs to see we're unified in this approach. Well, all I got to say is that I am glad it's you two guys that are here doing this because we have a lot of confidence in both of you. And so we, we understand the, the position that we're in as a school. And, uh, we're glad that you're here to, to change these numbers.
May I? Um, yeah, I, I agree with, um, Ms. Duncan and Mr. Guthrie. But obviously there's a lot, a lot of work to do. Uh, but I do want to say in terms of transparency, since I've been a parent and a board member these last whatever six years,
I agree.
I have not seen this level of transparency whatsoever.
I agree.
Well, I'm agreeing with that too.
Really appreciate that.
Sure.
And I know it takes a ton of work to crunch all these numbers, so thank you, Mr. Casey, for doing that. Uh, and when you have a plan of attack, can you bring that to the board? And lay, lay it all out?
Sure.
Thank you. I have one other thing. Oh. Um, so we went from a B to a D. I looked at what other schools did, other high schools did in Arizona. And they did less good, but we did much less good. Like they went, they went generally from a B minus to a C plus. And we went from a B to a D. Do we have any sort of understanding of why we did worse overall than a lot of students, a lot of schools?
You know what, uh, I wanted, Dr. Chabot, I know it has some good information he shared with me. Mr. Casey also that can address the high school. Share some of what you shared with me.
May I? Uh, so one area where we still always receive ten out of ten was like a, a graduation rate improvement. And the state criteria for receiving those points, either we need to reach a ninety percent graduation rate or we need to like show improvement from prior year or stay within two points from the prior year's graduation. The year before, in twenty twenty, we had ninety four point eight nine graduation rate. Um, and twenty twenty one, it went down to eighty eight point eight nine. So it was very close to the ninety percent, but it didn't meet any of the criteria. It was more than two points dropped from prior year. And it was below the ninety percent. So we did not receive any points out of the ten points. So that was a significant drop in one area that by itself. Yes, the proficiency went down, um, and the growth also went down. But looking at our immediate neighbors, here, we did better than our proficiency rates are better. And we also did not receive any of the bonus points. So that is, but the one significant impact is here in the graduation rate improvement, a ten point drop.
So pre-graduation rate wise, if we maintain roughly our current rate or improve for the next, for next, for this year, then we get ten points for that, that we didn't get this time.
Unfortunately, this coming year, we still have a zero because they are grading us based on the twenty twenty two graduation rate. So for twenty twenty four, yes, we are going to improve that and we are going to do that. Um, but, um, for next year, the points are going to be the same, the ten and zero, they have to stay. So that's already known because they are calculating it based on the prior year graduation.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Any questions, Jerry, you see?
Thank you, Mr. Casey. We have finally, there's a discussion of the staff.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, members of the board, um, uh, explanation I have here that a, uh, we have a, a member from our board requesting a revision of the staff survey. So, um, there is no board action necessary at this time. Uh, the administration is asking the board for their feedback and will contact other pre-K help, pre-K club districts for examples. Uh, that being said, of, one of the things I'd like to do is, is other districts do have accountability and research departments for a pro, for a project that is so critical like this. So what I want to make sure is just use our partnerships that we established this year. Uh, and our people economy support and the collaborative group, we give our next group this Thursday. So I want to just start right away, um, talking with other districts and people economy. And we have by, Samarita, for a while, just get their feedback on what process they, they established to be having good objective, it's critical to have an objective, um, staff survey to make sure that. It's critical to have an objective staff survey to make sure that we're doing it, but that we're doing it right. I I don't want us to rush through it and just give a survey and have it set to go right away. I want to really use this partnership and just try and talk with, we want to use this partnership to talk with other districts in Pima County, but also anywhere else that we may have other, other administrative collaborations that we can do, like Dr. Chabot and myself. But that's what came to mind first thing is just to talk with some of the districts in Pima County. Give them, have it give us their feedback, give us your input on how you got this started, do we have, what kind of survey you have now? Making sure that it's objective when answering the questions. There should be no subjective questions in a, in a, in a staff survey. It should be more objective to where we can get a feedback and a real, a real feel from the staff coming in the survey.
Well, this is a survey that asks whether the board members should be more involved in the day to day operations during the school.
Yeah, that's.
There's the old.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's pretty agree, but the current survey is not very useful, so.
Sure.
I think, I think this is a good tool the administration use. Absolutely, and I think it's fantastic you have all these relationships with other districts. Because people can understand how important it is to have a good network of other people to get ideas from, bounce things off of.
Right.
And maintain these relationships very well.
And it's, you know, but you don't have to, you don't want to reinvent the wheel. We also know that role was built in the day. So I think we really wanted to collaborate with our administrative partners, Maricopa County and Pima County, to figure out, hey, give us some feedback, when you guys got this started, what exactly did you do? What are some of the questions, the answer scale, how do you have it set up? Disagree, strongly disagree, agree, strongly agree, and A not applicable. Give us some feedback of what we can use here.
I think one thing, even with the old school, I think we would have made it more useful if we had been in a space for, we're basically longer against it for one day advance. If I see somebody who their response is either dissatisfied, highly dissatisfied, I want to know what it, you know, why. You know what that's what it is that they're dissatisfied with, well, we can do the change of it.
Sure.
Isn't very helpful if it's just, well, you got this good, you got this good.
Sure.
If there's not a reason why, that that person can explain to us why they, why they scored. I know that needs to be on the question or it needs to be assembled.
We can ask, we can ask, we can ask. Or open the, hey, we open an honest with this, what, how did you get your survey started and what's the best way to have it set up?
Sure.
Yeah, I think I've shared some of this with you, but super unworth it's anonymous. If it's not, it's not super useful. And a question for the board, I would like to see something in the summer. Not, not necessarily.
In the draft.
Exactly. So is that something that we need to get it on the agenda for Wednesday to vote, to direct Dr. Sotero to have something to us?
I think that's, that's, that's giving him a suspense day because he's still going to talk a lot of people to put this together. I think a month, that's kind of close.
I could do it in a day.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. Oh, look, this is an administrative tool for the administration to use. I think once Dr. Sotero has no time to put this together and then give us the full clarification of it with that.
I would probably vote for it to get it in December.
Also, I'd like to be here for it because I I initially, two, more than two years ago, I'm the one who asked for this survey. And it never happened, and it never happened, and then it finally happened behind our backs and it was not good. So I really would love to see it follow and see a good survey that works and is useful for the district. And I know you have a lot of work and you want to get some input, but it shouldn't be super time consuming. I I'm totally happy to help. I worked on this a ton unfortunately over the last two years because that's what happened.
Let, let, let us talk about this tomorrow, just kind of figure out how we can, first after the meeting, tomorrow, Wednesday, move forward, what do you need to do? I wanted to stress again, I don't want to rush through it to show you something, just to show you something. I want to make sure it's a fine, quality finished product. And I want to stress again, we'll, we'll take care of it. At the same time, other districts do have complete accountability and research department employees that are there all day. So let us figure this out tomorrow and we'll, we'll do our best to have the best possible feeling for you as soon as possible. But I don't want to rush through something to have you see it, just to see it. But it is, we want to put together a really quality finished product for you as soon as we can.
I appreciate that. And you are, that is why we can, you have to tell, tell us, you have nothing to do, so.
We'll, we'll, we'll get to where we guys are. Mr. President, government board participated in the self evaluation. ASB has confirmed their report and sent it to the superintendent and board secretary. There is no board action necessary, this is an informational item only, this is for you to look at, to look through. It's quite extensive, it's very detailed, but this is something that we, we made sure to put this, I believe on July the Thursday, right? We put this in the, for the board to have for Thursday. So it's pretty detailed, the best thing I can suggest is, is that you just review it tomorrow. And I mean, it's, it's, it's very.
It's a lot of information.
It's a lot of information. I mean, even from Thursday to today is not enough time. So I would just, you know, just look through it in depth, the data from now till our next study session, it's very in depth. I'm just talking as this, you know, it's a lot of information, don't, don't rush through this. But, but for it to be salient and really, really make a difference, you have to look through it and just really dissect it. And, and, and I can't stress that enough, really look through it. And you start to figure out how we want to go forward with this. There's key points that we can share, I believe, in the next study session. Key, key points we can share here, but also key points to share in the new year. That this, this is a terrific guide, I know I see one of our, one of our new, new board members here. This is a terrific guide also for finish this year and in the new year. It's, it's pretty extensive.
Is it possible we could get copies of this to the, of other board members coming out this week and are you also?
I, I think that's a great idea, Mr. President, Mr. Curtor, I think that's a great idea to have them with this doing and to start looking through it also.
I, I remember there was a, ASBA will give a walkthrough of it. I know it costs, it's extra, it costs. Could we find out how much, how much it costs to do that?
Sure.
It would be, because I have looked at this and I think it would be useful to have someone that's really familiar with the tool and the data to help us interpret it and come to some conclusions. Because it is, it's updated a lot, so you can, it's a way.
Sure. We can, we can get into that.
Yeah, I, I think I remember it was not expensive by Zoom, but I don't remember how much it was.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it is so much to do, you know, from all of it right now.
Can I, I have a question, are you going to review all of it?
Uh, well, I was, I was. I figured this would be one we could look at at the end of the discussion at the next, really do it. When do they have to do it?
I, I just put here, it's for you guys to decide, but I put here, there's three weeks now to December. So if you need to review this, give you time, you're not rushing through it.
I think that's a good idea.
Today to Wednesday, I think, is, is, is not enough time. What do you think you need to do all the time? That's just me.
So for Wednesday, oh, oh, wait, I'm going to ask for an agenda item on it for Wednesday, but not for this.
Okay.
All right, you have a question. I noticed there's five participants. So does, and I thought it was going to be the five board members plus the superintendent. So is it, is, does this just include board members or?
It shouldn't include all of us, I believe.
Am I wrong?
I also, I also concluded mine.
Because I see two and two with one, two and two with one.
Well, I think, I'm looking at.
Did it not include everybody in certain ones?
I don't know. I don't know, but maybe that's a question for, for ASBA.
Wait, I'm, is that it?
What was I shooting at?
I think it, all the board members sent superintendent ticket. So how they compile, we didn't have anything to do with the compiling or anything. Everybody sent their, their surveys over and they put together this report, we didn't have anything to do with it.
Sure.
So I would, I would suggest if we're going to ask Julie Baker or maybe Willie to come in and explain it. Wednesday's really short, they probably won't be available, so maybe if we can ask and maybe come and have her explain it on, on the December meeting. So that she can explain what's going on with it. This is just something that we were sent and we didn't really have anything to do with it.
So I, what I was going to ask for the agenda item for Wednesday would be to vote to do exactly that, to ask, to, based on knowing the cost and what they would do for us, to ask them to come back and explain some of it a little bit. And I wasn't even going to suggest that it be held up until January. So the new board members can participate in that because there's a lot in here. And a lot of it is about understanding what, what board to do. And if you look at, if you look at the data, it's all over the place. One of us thinks we do it all the time, the other one thinks we never do it. So that could be information that's a bit educational.
It might not be the same board number every time.
No, of course, yeah, of course, but if you look at it, that's, that's how it is, it's all over the map.
It's a good start, I really think it's a good start, Mr. Hopkins, Mr. Robertson, that you all were just giving your feedback. It's a good way to start, how do we, how do we get better?
Right.
It's a good step in the right direction.
Right.
I think that's a good idea as far as January, let us follow up, figure out how to, let us figure this out for the one, simply get here. It's a good one, it'll be a good one.
Any other discussion? Then our next item is the agenda item, the agenda.
I'm going to, you know what salary scale is and how it relates to three oh one? I, I, you know, I've been on here ninety years, I don't think I've ever seen a salary scale. Do we have one?
Yes, it's in a certified working conditions.
I'm certified?
And certified working conditions in back or now, is it here, it's in the front?
Okay, is that a question?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, and I don't see how it relates to three oh one and that kind of stuff. How to lose out, I don't know, how the teachers are getting enough money.
Yes. You ready also on the other information, Mr.?
Yeah, I'm asking for an agenda item on the self evaluation, board self evaluation, just to find out how much it would cost to have ASBA come in and when if we want to do that.
I think the most manager.
Oh, yeah, we got to do that.
I have a, yes. Mr. Hopkins, yes. Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Five zero.